Everyone.
Hello.
Is it okay? We should wait.
I don't know.
Okay. All right, think about it.
Yeah.
The last one to talk to you about a month ago.
Yeah.
Was about the impact piece.
Okay.
You mentioned in the executive meeting that we were...
We have two hours to do.
Some kind of virus.
Yes, to one development.
They're safe with them?
It's in their development agreement.
Whatever.
That's what I thought I had written on for the spot. And without those, we can't do much of this.
You're exactly right.
So what's the deal?
You're exactly right. So should I call this to work for you already? Where's Cheryl?
I don't know where she is.
Is Cheryl coming, chief? Moving?
She's here.
Oh, she's here. Oh, okay.
I don't know where she is.
All right.
She'll be in the restroom.
Well, shall we start without her or shall we wait?
Well, as I'm missing her.
Uh huh. She was at five o'clock.
Could be in the restroom.
To the restroom?
Maybe. We'll give her a minute or so.
It is. It's really cute. I didn't read the little card.
Yeah, it's cool.
I've come home not surprised by this.
I have it sitting on my desk. All right, well. So we'll go ahead and get started since videos got rolling. Welcome. I'd like to call the city council workshop meeting to order. It is January 13th and 5:01 PM. With that, we will open up to a public forum where the city council will receive comments from public. Is there anybody here that has anything that they'd like to say? Okay. All right, then we'll move right along to the workshop agenda. So these workshop items on the agenda are for discussion only and no action will be taken. So item number two on the agenda, discussion on current, future, and upcoming capital improvement projects. All right, Mr. Rosniewski, you're WG8.
Good evening, everyone. A few cool things to talk about tonight. And a lot of this you've seen before. These are updates, additional pieces. And then ultimately leaving here with things to think about, things to consider in some direction on what y'all want to see, on how to move forward. So what we'll do is we're going to run through kind of a project list. Same one that you've seen before, highlight the changes, highlight kind of the updates on where some of these stand. We're going to talk through your impact piece, so what we expect to collect coming up, which we have collected thus far. And then finally, we're going to wrap it up and talk about funding options and water insurments. How those two are. So stop me as we go. We'll go through again, the decisions tonight, the actions tonight, the workshop. Tentative, start thinking through this and then give some direction on what additional information to see on how to make decisions about funding these projects.
Question.
So without further ado, there are three documents in front of me, two state documents. So if you go to the ones that are 117 subs, I go to the second page of that. So this is that project list. So same format, same thing that you've seen before. So I'm going to run through not every item on here, but kind of hit the highlights of what are the priority items? What changes have occurred and what is new to the list that is in potential for this? So stop me if you have questions as I go through. So your water plant number two improvements project. That one's ongoing, as you know, Cheryl just talked about that and the noise coming from it. One thing I want to note on there, this project was bid. It was bid with an alternate or a supplementary item for replacing the tank foundation. So that's included in the contract amount. We were hopeful that once they took the tank down, that they could see the foundation would be in good condition. And they took the tank down, it was cracked all the way through. So they're replacing that, so there won't be a deduction, change order, or not replacing the foundation to that project. So that was, I think, roughly an $85,000 liability in the contract. But we were hopeful it wasn't going to need to be, unfortunately, unless they got there. It definitely, definitely was. Next one's down, so your water plant four improvements. That's the new water plant with an elevated storage tank. Talked about that one before, so the cost you see there is the construction and engineering contingencies all in. Pleasant Morgan erosion, and so we're back up. 1097 sewer replacement project, that contract is already out. That contractor should be mobilizing this week to lock that out over on 1097. Water plant number four, that project has been RFQ, so we have responses from engineers that have scored. But we wanted to get through the funding discussion to talk about the funding of the design and construction before we brought a recommendation before with awarding that project. The one project on the list is the Pleasant Morgan erosion repairs, that there has been nothing started on that as of yet. So that is right at Pleasant Morgan where the creek is corroded up to it. That definitely needs to be done. The Town Creek wastewater plant, we've talked about that. So it's not on your agenda for tomorrow, but on your next council meeting. We do have the proposal from Hafen Associates for approval. It came in, so our original estimate on design two years ago is around $600,000. It came in at 720. So it's higher than estimate it was two years ago. And the estimates, so we feel like it's a reasonable number, higher than expected, or a reasonable number. And at a future council meeting, we recommend the approval of that contract with Hafen Associates. College Street drainage and booster pump number three, both of those are the ARPA-funded projects that y'all did the resolution for not too long ago. So on your council tomorrow night is authorizing us to start putting together the big packages for both of those items. So those are listed on here. And then finally, this last one on this section is the Westway Drive water line upsizing. The timing of this one is a little to be determined. So this is the TriPoint development from Westway Drive to Lone Star Parkway, or kind of in that middle section. And so part of their agreement is they're upsizing the water line. And as y'all have done for Town Creek Crossing, you pay the cost difference. They need an eight, they're going to put in a 12, so you'll pay just the cost difference in that. Likely that'll move to next year, but it's on the list, so we're planning it. Yes, ma'am?
I was going to ask you about the College Street drainage improvement program.
Yes.
And I see that's the 233. That is a permanent fix, correct?
Correct. So what it includes is digging up what's there, replacing three culverts with new concrete culverts, rebedding, new guardrails, and then repairing the road. I don't remember the exact dimensions, but you know, 100 feet each way or so. I think roughly, or maybe a total of 100 feet. As well as working back on the north side of college, east of those culverts is regrading, excuse me, regrading the ditch and replacing those culverts along the way to get down to it.
Because it's not a year, huh?
Yeah, it's not a patch.
I just wanted to make sure that it was a permanent fix, because, gosh, I hate to say this, but it did seem like it was not as expensive as I thought it would be.
Yeah, it is. There's, I mean, it's not, the culverts themselves aren't that big, so it's three 18-inch culverts, which aren't, you know, a large cost item. The biggest thing that we have to work through is access. That's our main concern on that project, is replacing those while not cutting off into the street. So we're working through some options and likely what we're going to do is put additional requirements in the contract that they have to have temporary matting. And so they, at the end of each day, they put it back down, so access is still there during the day, and they have the ability to quickly allow access. So I think that's going to drive up, I think that will drive up the cost a little bit. That and with it being ARPA funds, there's additional requirements.
Wasn't there going to be a traffic study on that road for a future subdivision?
The, yes. So the, I can't remember what they were calling it, but essentially over here across the street, that was the Grace Point development. Village is that one, though? They, if they move forward, yes, they were going to do a traffic study because they had a road connecting from the end of college over to 149. It's like, what is the potential impact of this development on the road? But as of, we, that development is not moving forward yet.
Well, that, and that road, I asked about it recently, and they abandoned that. They would only, they're only looking at extending Caroline at this time. That's not the end-all, be-all. Just that's where they are today.
Okay. I just want to make sure that this was a permanent thing.
And of all of these, and number one, nothing else is ARPA outside of the College Street, is that right?
And booster pump number three.
And booster pump number three is ARPA? Okay.
So the one right below. So both of those are the ARPA-funded projects.
And we have already budgeted for all of the water plant two, 1097 sewer?
Yes.
Pleasant Morgan?
Water line number two, 1097 sewer, and the design of the wastewater plant, those were in your current CO projects. There's a little bit of a delta there after all the cost differences that we've talked about. And you have $681,000 sitting in your impact fee account. That can be used for those projects. Of course, yeah, especially the...
And this is not any of the money, well, no, I think it is actually the money. The water plant two improvements was the 3.2 million that we borrowed on that bond?
Correct.
Okay. Just curious as to where we're going to get the delta, that's all?
Correct.
All right.
So if you actually look over on that, there's four tables off to the left hand, or excuse me, the right-hand side. The bottom one is your CO fund summary. So that's the original 3.5 after these, what was left. You've used up 1.33, 2.1 remaining. And so from those other projects, we're back.
Okay, thank you.
So going one item down, so these are the projects that are ongoing, they have to be done. The, obviously, the, I'll say again, the Westway Drive, you know, one, that's the smallest item on the list. But that is obviously developer-driven and timeline-dependent on when that gets made. Moving over to the second, kind of the second priority projects. The first and last one were citywide drainage assessments. So this was looking at the culvert repairs, ditch cleanouts, kind of all throughout the city, and putting it in one big package to reestablish grades. Nothing has gone forward with that project. One of those that was on the lower priority list, but that's what those are. The one that I do want to discuss a little bit with y'all tonight, engage interest, is the Stanley Lake MUD interconnect. So what this is, is Stanley Lake is a municipal field dish next door. They serve the Scripps Center and apartment complex immediately adjacent to Pizza Shack. So we've been working back and forth with them on the idea of a emergency interconnect. So we can connect our water lines and prevent a loss of pressure. We can open up the interconnect and use them to help provide service to the city, since we're on an island by ourselves. So we've been going, talking through with them, they're open to the concept. We have also, so if you remember, two years ago, the Nantucket development, which was the apartment complex behind Pizza Shack. They don't have a timeline for moving forward, they're still evaluating options. However, they are interested in proceeding with the water line to get to their track. So what we have in the breakdown that's shown in here is a split of that cost. So we went through, said, look, if we can, obviously, larger projects are cheaper than smaller projects, and we're able to prorate some of this cost with the developer, it'll make more sense. So we haven't run the numbers by the developer, just in general conversations, he was open to the concept. But if you did it, you're looking at approximately, I guess, around number $75,000 for the city, and then $200,000, $260,000 the developer pays, because he has a much more substantial piece, much more substantial length. And then you would split the engineering prorate between the two. So you could overall save costs, and that's something we're interested in. We think it's a good idea, I mean, especially for semi, if developer agrees, a $75,000 investment to have an alternate water source. In case of emergency, I think it's well worth the investment to do. I think Mike would agree on that one, that it would be a good one to pursue, we can fit it to the overall budget.
We went into this hoping that we would end up with a, maybe a fifth, if it's split with Stanley Lake. This scenario works out even better.
Yeah, it is.
Stanley Lake's not interested in participating in the cost at all. That's the only downfall for their, their piping is right with this developer, and it works out like this, we end up with that.
So I have a question, Chris. So you said it's an alternate water source. So is it vice versa? So if we need water, there, we can buy it from them, if they need water, they can buy it from us?
Correct. And both entities have the ability...
Just want to make sure it was a two-way street, not a one-way.
Both entities have the ability to say no, so I'm going to...
Okay.
We're in an emergency, they can't just take the water. That we, both entities have to agree is how normal emergency supply network works. But yes, it's two-way. So we would help them, they would help us.
So they have to submit a request, correct?
What was that?
They would have to submit a request for the water if they needed water.
Yes, correct, vice versa.
So...
We're the ones that need the water.
Yeah, the steps, steps to that would be is that they would, that there's a development agreement that gets put in place. And that agreement defines what is an emergency and what is the process for notifying and opening. Typically, what our, what we recommend, there's two ways you can do it. You can do a meter, which meters are expensive and they have to be maintained. Or you do two locking valves next to each other, and you work out a calculation in the agreement. So you save, you know, whatever, this would be on a 12-inch line, I mean, a meter is $100,000.
I was going to say a significant amount, I thought, yeah.
And Stanley Lake was insistent on a meter from the first moment I talked to them. Until we explained this, just, just for emergency purposes, we don't need water on a whole basis. They backed off the EEB requirements. Yeah, we understand, we'll just work out an agreement on a price. So yeah, that helps out with the cost.
That's huge, yeah.
We should be able to figure flow by pressure and volume.
Yes.
A typical of us is you'll just take your average daily flow, divide it by, you know, the number of days that you're on here to connect, and split the cost out of it. Not exact science, but it's a simple word.
So across the street, there's their proposed HEB, right? And that's going to be at our end of our water line. Will there be a water line that goes under 105 that would also be able to have access with the, should there be an emergency?
Correct.
Okay. Not just on the north side, but it's going to also be able to...
Correct. Currently, the water line that crosses 105 is at the intersection of 2854.
Yeah.
In the second phase of the development. So HEB has the first, let's call it half of the site, and then there's the remainder developer who has the second. So what was laid out to HEB and is in their draft agreement that'll get routed in the next few weeks is they fund the portion up to their boundary, and then the next person will be required to connect it across 105.
Okay.
It will be more in front of the car wash.
Yeah.
Versus all the way down the end because the city limits in front of the HOA, or KOA, excuse me.
Okay. Right.
And again, no action tonight, but what, I think, just to wrap up the Stanley Lake discussion, Wilbury Bragg has introduced an item to report the agreement portion of this. There's also a study, an application has to go to the state because you're interconnecting two public water systems, so they have to approve it. And just to get that process started, and also enter into discussions with the developer on funding of that agreement. All right, any questions on any of the projects in items one or two above, before I keep on?
I have a question, but it's not, I'll let you go through this other before I ask it.
So item three, so these are kind of the recommended and not necessarily capacity increase. So we've talked about beach conversion over and over again. It's been on the wish list and there's, you know, finding, so it's still on the list, we don't want to take it off the list. However, you know, it's not a priority one. And then same thing with lift station number three improvements. So lift station, you know, lift station number five and lift station number three are probably your two most in need lift stations. TriPoint is replacing lift station number five as part of their development, so that one's covered. Lift station number three, if someone develops the Mayberry property, which is what wraps around MES, that lift station will get replaced. Polte has been kicking around the site, there's no, you know, definitive, they haven't requested a feasibility study on it, they just asked a couple of questions. So if that goes, there's a potential that it gets covered. So again, stays on the list, eventually something needs to be done with that lift station. The hope is the developer comes in and can either bear the total cost or at least a significant portion of the cost.
So, but lift station number five, I thought we already agreed to move that station.
We did.
Okay.
And that's with TriPoint. So they will move it and replace it kind of on one. So the current one that sits at the bottom of the creek right next to 105, that'll get abandoned and demolished. And it'll get moved kind of north on Westway Drive.
Yeah, I know the map, so...
When they say move a lift station, it literally means construct it, they were physically don't move.
Yeah, but is this developer-driven also?
It is, there is. And so they have actually put out their deposits for both of those projects. So the design of both the water line extension on Lone Star Parkway and the lift station five relocation project are both, those deposits, we received confirmation in the past week of those. So they're, those are moving forward. Okay. So then the last item, which is section four. Again, these are all developer-driven items and/or development complete. They just haven't taken them off the list because they haven't been paid out completely. So your morning cloud, that's Montgomery Crossing. The MISD water line, that's paying their share, that line is in place. They just haven't made it active because they're waiting until they're closer to the end of construction before they turn it over. So that's just the timing. The Buffalo Springs project we've talked about. The big one I want to talk about here, what has kind of the biggest asterisks next to it, is this TechStop 105 utility relocation project. So this project, and I think we've talked about this before, we talked about it during the budget planning season. We've gotten more clarity and less clarity since then because the timing keeps on changing from TechStop. So TechStop has completed their initial kind of planning of where the utilities go. We've identified all the conflicts that are there. So when you add up all the conflicts, the cost of all the survey, material assessing, et cetera, you're looking at about a $1.3, $1.4 million just utility relocation project. This doesn't upsize anything, this doesn't do anything, it just relocates utilities that are going to be in conflict with TechStop. Which is, which is a lot.
That's a lot.
So Tex, go ahead.
I was just going to say, what's the timeline on this?
So that is what keeps on moving. So TechStop originally said that this was a 2026 let date, so they wanted the utilities relocated by 2026. As of today, it is 2028, that that is moved back to. So it's a, so, you know, we don't, we don't want to recommend going forward with designing or relocating any money until there's a definitive timeline on it, because we're not in a situation just to spend, you know, $1.4 million and then wait for TechStop to do their project. So we're continuing to go back and forth, there's still some options with them that we're talking through as far as that'll hopefully save some of the overall cost doing a funding agreement, so their contractor handles the work. Concern with that is obviously, it's a TechStop contractor with city utilities. So we'll weigh that out as we get there. But we wanted to include it because, again, their timeline keeps moving, something to keep on the radar, but hopefully this...
Is there any cost share they're willing to do with this?
Not for utilities within the right-of-way. So, you know, when we have new developments, that's why we require easements outside of TechStop right-of-way. Because if they were in an easement and TechStop was expanding the right-of-way, they will pay to relocate the lines. In this case, these are existing utilities, and they were not in, they're in TechStop right-of-way. So therefore, you said you're using our right-of-way, and part of you using our right-of-way is if we have you relocate them at your expense.
And they've been there for how long?
1960.
Yeah. They, there are the original six-inch water line that ran out, you know, to Napa, which has been there, Montgomery Grove. It's been there for a long, I don't have the exact dates, but this isn't, the newest utility that is out there is when Chris Chidam extended the 12-inch water line on the north side to get over to Hills of Town Creek. That is the newest line out there, but...
That's 10 years old, I believe.
At least maybe 20.
Right.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Is that line in there right-of-way? The one we extended for 12?
Most of it's in an easement.
Yeah. Dang.
And then the rest of these are, again, just developer-driven projects, developer-funded projects that are on the list. The only two that the city has a share of in section four are the utility relocations, which are kind of big, to be determined on timeline, and the MISD payment cost share of that water line, which is done, just, it could be any day now, did they berate before returning it to the city? So all said and done, and then we'll get into kind of more of the details of it.
Chris, I have one question.
Yes.
So we had spent money and time redoing the, upgrading the city water lines from downtown from eight-inch to 12-inch. And in order for us to do our comprehensive plan, go along with that, we need to have the sewer done. I don't see sewer on here. Where is that?
Correct. So the, for the downtown redevelopment project, so there's, let's call it three components to it from its true city infrastructure, not including the streetscape stuff.
Yep.
You have your sewer line project, but that is complete, it was completed two years ago? A year and a half, I think, when this got kicked off. So that, that work is done, the sewer relocation project.
I thought you said that, okay.
The water line project, so the, replacing the water lines down in the count, because we don't want to put utilities. That is designed and ready to go. Our understanding was that was going to be kind of looped into the MDC cost, which, to bring you an update on that, we met with Ardura last week, and they are expecting to attend and bring updated cost estimates and schedules, or at least cost estimates and schematics to the 20th meeting on the 20th, next Tuesday's MDC meeting.
Are these, I thought we were going through Gunda, or we had worked with Gunda? I'm sorry?
Yeah.
So Gunda was purchased by Ardura.
Okay, oh, yeah, I know, I remember that, I think.
Correct. So, so Ardura is what he levels.
Okay.
And so...
And so what have we been waiting on? Because that was, golly, when did we, we brought them to the table a long time ago.
Yeah, so I mean, the design of the water line replacement has been on the shelf. I mean, it's been complete for probably closer to 12 months. We asked that question, so our understanding is, we're still trying to get details, because that was one of our questions to order, is like, how do we get to this point? They were understanding that they were on hold for some of it, that last fall they were told to put on hold. And they didn't have an answer kind of before that, they said, you know, things are just moving slow. They were waiting on some design decisions, which were mostly related to the driveway through the Steakhouse parking lot, which that was a decision that, you know, I think was made months ago. It did not last summer, they said, I think we're not interested in this. We were not involved in the day-to-day, so we're starting to gather the information and ask them to at least, to start out with, what is the overall cost of this project? So then we can determine, okay, if they come back and it's outside the MDC budget to be able to fund, what portion of that water line replacement needs to be completed further revised scope?
So have we made any payments to them, or we're just using them as advisory, and then we don't pay them until the projects start?
I do not, I do not.
Okay. Mary and Gina?
We can check.
So I looked under the thing that I had, I did not look up the people. This is the first time I've heard that.
Okay.
So I was not finding anything of any other options that I had.
Okay, yeah.
Or was I finding anything on the general ledger that was making sense to me in that area?
Okay.
But I will look this up.
Okay.
And see if we can, you know, come up with timeline and when that may have happened.
Was this not the company that we were talking about the other day?
Right. So as, that was Aruda or something like that, and now...
Gunda to Ardura.
Yeah.
Yeah, Gunda to Ardura, yeah.
And then he just said it was Gunda. And so we could have paid Gunda, but I don't know.
I think we did pay Gunda.
We did pay them.
They did a couple there.
I'm not sure for what, but I know we've made some payments to them.
And that was, so, you know...
I made a note to look that up.
Yeah.
Have we paid Ardura, have we paid them?
No.
Okay.
I don't even know that any of them have been coming to any meetings since...
Since forever.
They switched us.
I don't remember the exact date they called us on the call, but I think their last update they gave was early, or kind of mid '24, like March, April, May timeline, was their last update that they gave to MDC on the project.
Oh, God, it's been a long time ago.
As in a presentation.
It was last spring.
Yeah, it was.
When they presented the one-way street.
Yeah, yeah.
And so what they've been asked to bring to next Tuesday's meeting is updated cost estimate. We've asked to have it by tomorrow, so that we can send out in advance, or excuse me, Wednesday, a updated schematic of what is the plan, because it's, it's been talked about, one-way, two-way, partial one-way. What is the current plan that they're working on?
Okay.
And just the high-level estimate, because, again, they come back and say, well, here it is, and it's a $5 million project. Okay, well, let's, what can we do within the budget we have, and then modify the water line. So that is not in here, you are correct. And again, once we find out what the cost is and what the down... And again, once we find out what the cost is and what the down, what MEDC is contributing, we can come back.
Yeah, that would be great because we've put the money on the comprehensive plan and putting that together, that's what's kicked off the sewer line and water line, like let's, so, and McCowen has been, we've talked about it quite a bit, and I'm being asked by business owners, what's going on? And I'm like, ah, I haven't gotten, and I had been asking about the sewer and waterlines and nobody's been able to give me a date, so thank you for that.
We had that discussion with them as well. What was the, again, because we're kind of coming in catching up, all of us on the call are catching up on information. What was the scope of the community involvement that was in their original contract? Was it town hall meetings? Was it, you know, pamphlets? Who was supposed to be doing that? And their, their interchange that was not in their scope to do those items, and those were going to be handled by staff. We've asked that they just provide a, just for sake of conversation, a ad services proposal because if there's assistance needed in handling that with workforce, I mean, always have it in front of us to consider.
I mean, Mike, did you have anything or did you have anything different than that?
No, the conversations that I remember happening were, let's wait and see what this overall project is going to cost as a whole before we jump into spending money on a waterline. We don't want to put the waterline in and then find out that it's such an outrageous cost to go do with a full plan that we're not going to do it for 10 years. So let's wait and see. That's what I remember, which makes sense.
And it was also a timing because like we talked about, we're not going to go tear up the road, put in a waterline, fix the road, and then y'all come back and tear up the road to put in.
Sure. So it sounds like there just needed to be decisions made and we've never gotten back to the table to make those decisions.
What decision points, what is left for the city to decide and where for you to finish up the plans so we can go to construction?
And that was, so it sounds like that was city driven to not move forward or is the stall factor because they were thinking, they were waiting on us of what the directive was for design?
My understanding from the conversation we had with them last week was that they, there was a conversation last fall to kind of pause. It wasn't a stop work, at least they said it was kind of a pause slowly, but that wasn't until last fall. So.
I thought we were moving forward in that.
Well, I know they came to us with the plans for the one way.
Yes.
Streetscape, it last spring sometime, I don't remember when, but I remember seeing it. Well, it was after I made it on MEDC, so that was after May, so it was May or June.
And everybody was really excited and was okay with the one ways. Well, you weren't really.
No, they weren't because they had to, they had to bring them to council. The one way would have to get them to council to get approved.
Right.
And at the time, we advised MEDC, because I knew Cheryl, and I knew Cheryl was not going to be, I said, look, the odds of this passing council is slim, so let's just tell them, is there another plan? Let's get something else.
Yeah, and that's what we're waiting for, or we, that's where the last.
Seeing this, so, because we piece it together, they have a two way up to Larry Jacobs Lot, kind of that entrance next to Larry Jacobs Building, and then a one way from there to.
Macon.
It was just a very short chunk.
Caroline College, okay.
From College to essentially just past the steakhouse was one way.
Okay.
Or, and then it was, college to the Jacobs Lot was one way, and then it was two way in front of the Jacobs Lot on Cowan.
Yes, on McCowen.
So you could park either way and then kind of rotate back out, but the one way you couldn't head south on Cowan.
Yeah, okay, that's, yeah, 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 it's coming back to me, yeah.
But that, that one way was all keyed off of being able to turn right and go through the parking lot at the steakhouse. And when we found out that he was not interested in us doing that, it kind of threw the one way out the window, besides the fact that we would never pass the house.
And the other one is to go through Jacobs Parking Lot.
Yeah, but, yeah, we'll lose that parking if we do that.
But then I know that he had put in for some MEDC funds to help eat the steakhouse back in March of '22, and then again, last year, and never heard back from the person that was over that. And so I think he's amenable to having a discussion because he wants help with this parking lot, his asphalting it. So I think that there's a partnership now that we could probably talk to, whatever that looks like, just FYI, I know.
No, that's good news, good information.
Yeah, so again, hopefully here in the next few days, you should at least have updated costs, updated what it is, and then can make a decision to have it forward. So when you add it all up and.
Is, is tonight a night to ask a question about College Street or hold it till tomorrow?
But if you want to ask now and that way, I don't want to answer, we can get it to you by tomorrow night.
On both sides of the street, what, what are we doing there where the culverts are? Where the water flows.
Correct.
Through it at 90 miles an hour, what are we doing there?
Correct. So the full scope of the project, so is replacing the three culverts, resetting them, properly bedding the back mills of their stuff. On both the upstream and downstream edges, put large riprap, regrade it, shape it, and put large riprap, that it help dissipate some of the energy so it doesn't just continue to shoot downstreams. That's on both the upstream and downstream side of that. It then includes the new guardrails on each side, repaving on top of it, and then regrading the ditch specifically on the north side of Caroline, excuse me, north side of College, heading toward the east back toward.
Okay.
Is that exhibited in the package?
Chris, the other thing, since you was talking about that, Carol, would that address any of the problems that the two homeowners on the north side of College, would that address their water problems?
Can you remind me, because I remember talking about water problems on that property many times over the years, can you remind me what the latest, was it water backing up or was it volume of water?
It was coming over and it's volume of water and they have a, they have a retaining wall there and it's starting to make that retaining wall fail because I, I'm assuming, I'm not, the rapid water and the amount of water that's coming because of the building that's happened.
It'll, it'll help dissipate the energy before it goes down, so it's going to slow it down so the road isn't.
And the house that's west of that was an issue too because it got all the way up to her porch.
This will not.
I don't see how that, yeah, that's got to change now.
Because we're not doing anything downstream to improve how it gets all the way to Town Creek. This is just kind of fixing those culverts. Now, one thing I will note, we're not increasing the size of the culverts, so we're not putting more water through, we're just replacing any kind of what's there today.
But there's nothing that you're going, there's nothing that you're going south to, to.
Move the water fast.
Control the water coming through the culvert.
Other than, I mean, we'll do riprap on both sides, it's going to slow it down, but we're not changing the volume. We're not increasing the amount that can go under, but there's not.
So Chris, are we concerned about TriPoint and or Grace Point, the housing that's going to come here, that's going to create more wash off to go down that way? I mean, are we engineering it for future?
What their requirement is to be, they mitigate all of their increase volume. So both, so the TriPoint folks will put in their own ponds on, along the creek, and then the Grace Point, they had, I think, if I remember right, two or three proposed ponds to help offset their flow going to this creek as well.
And so it's going to be a minimal impact or no impact?
I mean, so what are, what the city requirement is that they, their post-developed flow does not exceed their predeveloped flow.
Okay.
Today, they're sending 100 cubic feet of water. After it's done, they can send no more than 100 cubic feet of water downstream.
Yeah, because my problem with ponds is when ponds are full, they run off just as much as runs in, so.
Right. Yeah, so I mean, at the 100 year storm event, which is what the drainage criteria.
Which we seem to be having every time it rains.
And those ponds.
Our 100 year comes every five.
First stages will go in, and then the rest will go over extreme overflow and down.
So where my sewer manhole is in front, off of College, right there in front of the property, when the water's coming through that creek ditch, whatever you want to call it, that water comes across the street and will cover up my manhole there. It comes barreling across.
Over the top of the road.
Over the top of the road. So if you cleaned the ditch out back toward 149, no, 105, would that help? Is that not our ditch? Is that somebody else's ditch?
So you do not have an easement over all of those ditches and creeks kind of through that area. You have some between the different developments? I can't remember off the top of my head which.
Because everybody believes that it's city ditch.
I know there is a gap.
You know what I'm saying?
Especially between west side of the park and College Street, there is a gap there for sure. Once you get into Lone Star Estates, I believe they dedicated some easements.
I think they did.
And then once you get to west side of the park, there are some easements, but that there is a gap between Caroline and College.
But see, the water comes off of 105 right here and winds through that property there. So I don't know.
Let me do some more digging to answer kind of your first question just directly.
So the house that she's talking about, that almost floods every time we get any kind of rain there, is because the water is not going through the culverts.
Right.
It's coming over the street.
And this project is specifically just fixing the road in the culverts?
Correct.
Looking at quantity of water, direction of water, things like that, just kind of fixing.
Because I have a new hole and now you have to go over here to this hole and.
Because it's less deep than the other hole.
Just, just to clarify, Carol, are you saying that, I want to make sure Chris understands that, are you saying that it's going over the road because the culverts are already full and it's pushing, okay, it's not a difference?
Yes.
So that's coming across as a difference.
No, no. Only, right, actually the house, the house that I'm talking about is Mary Thompson's house. Right. When the culverts are doing what they're supposed to be doing, the water is still coming across. Yes, yes.
So the culverts aren't big enough?
I don't know.
That's what I was thinking, like, but then he said too big, it's going to keep up the rapidity of the ground.
Let us take a look and kind of do some.
Somebody suggested one big culvert, not.
That's too much velocity?
Little culvert.
Right.
I, I don't know anything about it.
Mike, do we, we don't have the left hand side, the south side of that road? We don't have an easement or a way we can do a ditch or anything there?
Not, not running away, not running out of the right of way.
Yeah.
We just have what's in the right of way.
How, how wide is that?
Thirty?
Itty bitty.
Yeah.
Itty bitty.
It's small.
So instead of using riffraff, if you used engineered, I've seen it where we basically just pour these concrete cubes, right? That would slow it down enough to.
It's almost like you have her retaining wall as well, like fish?
All about slowing down water, dissipating some of the energy so it's not down.
Eating the ground.
But what we're not changing is the capacity. Let us take a look and see what other options are before we get into.
You want some videos?
Because it sounds like we need to change, change the capacity.
She's got them.
Right.
Especially with other developments upstream.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think there's going to be an impact?
I'll take whatever videos we have, we'll look at some options.
I don't know. The, the water is coming so fast through those culverts that that's what's washing.
Right.
That's what they want to mitigate. They want to mitigate the erosion and by putting this correction in, it's going to slow the water down and slow the erosion factor down. So they're trying to help.
Right, so my thought process though is, is if we put in more volume and slow it down so that way you don't need the speed to move the water, you can get by with just a larger hole, right? It might solve all the problems.
But Mike, there's no easement on that side. There's no easement on that side though, is there?
No, not, not.
Well, you need 30.
Both sides.
He said 30 feet, well, that's about all you need to get those concrete cubes in.
Y'all are smarter than I am.
It's tight, it's, it's.
So just replacing the culverts is going to make an improvement too, because right now, the culverts are not clogged up, but they're caddy office, like you wouldn't believe.
Okay.
So just even though they're the same size, putting them in at the right level and dicing straight will help with the flow as well.
But we'll take a look at that and again, for.
Send videos, girl. Roll tape.
All right. So when you go down the bottom of the page, big superior number at the bottom, when you add up, you know, all the city share of the projects, including the TechStop stuff, you're looking at almost $24 million, take away your current COs and their ar附fides, you're still sitting at $21 million, which is a big number. So next thing we want to discuss is obviously your impact fees and what's expected from that, the timing. Then we'll talk about some of the sewer rate stuff that we looked into to generate additional impact. All right, so the next page that I was thinking to that one looks like this, and what this shows is a very quick summary of your known moving forward developments and expected time of plating and when they would pay their impact fees or what impact fees they would pay based on today's. And then if in their agreement, there is any type of credit, that's lifted off to the side, so it's pracked out from total. So you go down to the second table, you see your impact fee balance. So where you're sitting at right now is 681, 666. We are still expecting payment from Redbird, correct? So that will go up and that's included in the category. So when you keep on going down that table, your projected balance, 2025, 2026, 2027. Big note is that assumes that you're not spending money out of that. This isn't a cash flow, this is just, here's what we have today, here's what we expected to come in, not spending money out, which we know is not reasonable, but just trying to give you a magnitude of what is expected. So I'm not going to go through each line I'm on here because that's not helpful, but you'll see the developments listed, expected timeline of plating and the amounts that they would pay. So you're 681 today, projected by the end of '25, you have a total of about three and a half.
God, that's crazy.
Because you have Redbird, Montgomery Bend, their last two sections, another section of Redbird, and then closer to the end of the year, sorry, I'm skipping over. HEB, that May 25, we have asked them, and that is their timeline that they would expect to plat the property, is by kind of before summer. Nothing on the building, just to clarify that this is when they plan to plat. And then the rest of them, Hills of Town Creek, section five, that's going to get behind for tomorrow. One noted on that is they pay at the time of connection, so you're not going to expect to get a check for that full amount, you're going to get it per each cap as it grows. And the rest of them, we see listed. Their Heritage Grove, just so we're all on the same naming convention, is the TriPoint. That's the first phase, which is the larger lots development. Their, their plan is to start at Lone Star Parkway and work south toward 105.
So that's the one just north of Napa here?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. The crossing at Montgomery is the Marbury Cox Development over here, between Old Players Grove and Old Dodson Players Grove. And then Lone Star Ridge is the Taylor Morrison Development on Lone Star Parkway.
That used to be called Windswept or something like that?
But yeah, it's Taylor Morrison and then Lone Star Ridge is the current name.
Who is Superior Properties?
Superior is the one who came in toward the end of last year about the rezoning that backs up to Lawson and Simonton.
Oh.
With the, the mixture of a.
Commercial and.
Multifamily commercial component. And so there, so that one, so Superior Properties, HEB are both working on development agreements with city attorney, so those will be certainly once they're kind of draft form to move forward.
And we don't have Milago on here because they're going to be.
They've gone silent. I have not heard from them. I think we've reached out in, have heard if they're planning to store it off.
Okay.
So you do have impact fees coming in, however, I mean, obviously, as you know, you know, four million, three and a half million is not.
Are those, but, so just real quick, the 2025 balances, this is a accumulated balance to hit 5 million?
Correct. It is accumulated by the end of each of those years.
Okay.
So basically, almost a million dollar jump every year, it looks like, the difference.
Yeah.
I think the accumulation would be the maxed out at five. It wouldn't be five plus four plus three, it's five.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, like, it's gaining a million dollars every year.
The developments we know today.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Obviously, a lot of other properties, but what you know today, that are, that seem to be moving, seem to be moving forward here about five and a half.
Yeah.
And Chris, remind me, what's our limit, or, um, what can we use impact fees for?
So you can use it for items that are on your capital improvement.
Okay.
All this stuff.
Yep.
That are for, uh, increased capacity.
Okay.
So you cannot use, so let me use Water Bank two as an example. You are replacing the tank in kind, so you can't use it for the tank. If you made the tank bigger, which we looked at the option, it didn't make a whole lot of sense, you could use that increased capacity piece.
Okay.
So for the well, it went from a three hundred GPM to a five hundred GPM, so we're taking, you know, two fifths, or two fifths of the cost as impact fee eligible, and the rest is not.
So it's not for repair, it's for new.
Correct, it's all full.
Yeah, okay.
Growth.
New water, okay.
Hmm.
And actually, if you look on this sheet, uh, the very last column, it has a yes or no onto what are the impact fee eligible private strominers to list. All right, I left one off, the, the water line upsizing, oh, that's not on the list, that's right. But it definitely goes through your biggest, your biggest ticket item, so plant expansions, which are one hundred percent expanded capacity cost, that's, that's really where it is. And you can also use impact fees for payment of debt on, so if you borrow, you can use impact fees towards something.
That CO we had, if we wanted to pay it off, if we could, okay.
All right. So kind of where this all culminates, and you have a big lengthy packet that's marked preliminary life, because this is really just a talk. Is, obviously, we have a delta, so I mean, you have a lot of money needing to be spent, to meet the demand, um, and you need additional funds. So, we talked to your financial advisor, and we looked at a handful of different items. So, you have, you know, grants. So, as we talked about before, you know, Montgomery isn't big enough for the big regional type projects. You're not small enough to be, you know, have low, low income, so you're right in that middle, but it doesn't check a lot of the true free money grant projects. Other than the very specific, you know, hey, here's a grant for transportation alternatives, or sidewalks, or, you know, those very specific items. When it comes to big plant infrastructure, you're too small for the big regional stuff, you're too, uh, big for the kind of rule system stuff. You're kind of right in the middle, or, you know, you, you don't fall into a lot of those categories. There's still funding opportunities out there through the water development board, through others, but not free, when you say free with quotes, not grant money, these are loan interest rate loans, things like that, or, or whatever, which you'll use before the water. Uh, so then you go back, and we look at, you know, the COs, so you just issued water and sewer revenue COs. So, uh, based on today's market, as of Friday, when we talked to your financial advisor, about seventy-five thousand dollars in additional water and sewer revenue gets you about a million dollars in CO capacity. So for every additional seventy-five thousand we can generate water and sewer, uh, we can get a million dollars reference and, um, borrowing money for that amount, to be able to back in with that. And then, you know, obviously, a tax base, tax-backed bonds, which is a different discussion, not going into that tonight, other than when I go through the water and sewer rates, we're talking about, you know, what options you want to see, and what makes sense, and have your financial advisor help with something. So, um, kind of knowing that, knowing the delta, we went through a rave analysis. So I'm gonna, you know, I don't expect to read every word, I'm not trying to read every word that's in here, but flip to the very last page, and I want to start here, of the, uh, the memo letter. So one thing that I know, uh, has been a concern of council, of the residents, is making sure that our rates are competitive with ours. That we're not, you know, extremely high, extremely low, that we're falling in line. So, what you see here is, obviously, we're using averages and making assumptions and kind of running the same calculation across the board. So, forget your proposed, uh, rates at this point. When we look at your existing city of Montgomery rates, existing Conra rates, and existing city of Magnolia, you can see for the different user types, your single-family, commercial, multifamily, institutional irrigation, how those vary between the two. Couple important things to note, these include all of their regional water authority related fees. So, uh, both the Conra and Magnolia have SRA fees that they pay. Um, you know, city has a regional water authority fee, or groundwater reduction plan fee that's included on the bill, that's all included in here. Uh, so you can see that, again, based on our existing, we're at, for a single-family home, on average, fifty-two dollars. Um, Magnolia's seventy-four, Conra's one oh four. Uh, and then, commercial, irrigation, institutional, it varies, but you're, you know, in the ballpark, there's quite a lot of variation. Just kind of keeping that in mind.
What is the difference on the institutional?
Institutional are your churches, your schools, essentially, your, your city buildings, non-taxable.
I know, but why is there such a, uh?
Oh, the difference, uh, Zach can pull it up, and he has on his computer on where the difference falls on how they set up their rates.
What about Water Development Board?
What about it?
Uh, don't they have a, uh, survey that are a, uh, program that kind of helps you decide your rate in, in your water?
The, I, I'm not familiar with.
Have you ever seen it?
I know they have funding sources for funding water sewer analyses and, and things, and also if you.
Mike, have you ever seen it?
What?
We used to use it all the time, when we got ready to raise rates. Texas Water Development.
It could be.
Like a water rate calculator?
Yeah.
We'll take a look, I'm not familiar.
And it's, it shows the cities around you, it shows if you're gonna be way out of line.
We'll, we'll take a look. Uh, I know, a lot of the times I've dealt with rate-related stuff, I went through the Public Utility Commission on rates, uh, but we'll.
Right.
We'll go back and take a look and see, um, on what.
It was very, very helpful.
Okay.
We don't get the magazine anymore, I don't think, but we used to get a magazine every month, and.
So based on, on these proposed rates though?
Yes.
Right, this, obviously, you've done a bunch of work here. Based on this, this proposed rate, what kind of a impact are we looking at?
So, if, we're just working off that last column, so that average user was sixty-three dollars. Um, when you carry that down, you're looking at about seven hundred and fifty thousand in additional water and sewer revenue. And what that means, see that, obviously, you put it there, but to the average single-family home is ten thousand.
Right.
Uh, commercial, it varies, um.
Now, this is water and sewer?
That's the combined water and sewer. This last sheet is like a combined bill. The sheets in front go through what the changes are per category, um, conceptual.
How, how many single families are fifty-two dollars a month?
So the average user is sixty-three hundred gallons a month.
That's the average user?
What?
That's the average user?
Correct, so we took the last twelve months.
So not average.
Yeah, need, need.
No.
Data.
And this is not including solid waste?
What?
This is not including, like, trash collection?
No, this is just water and sewer, right?
Oh, I'm just talking about water and sewer.
Yeah.
I'm not average.
No, neither am I.
Yeah, we, so we took the last twelve months of data and ran the average amongst them. It was.
Right.
So, and we even, we, we took out, because there's a lot of new connections that have zeros, so we excluded those zero accounts, so we weren't trying to drive it down artificially. Uh, and it's, that's where we got this.
Okay, so, again, so you just did a total for each of the users, so single-family, seven hundred and, well, basically, a hundred thousand, and then forty-six thousand for commercial. Look at the missing one.
No. Yeah, there, there is a budget here.
So is there a total anywhere?
It's not on this sheet, um, and we just, we didn't have a, I need a cleaner version to hand out to you all. Wanted to talk through the concept, but it's seven fifty three dollars. So at the end of the day, you're looking at, with this change, about seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, that doesn't make sense though, because it says the single-family would generate seven hundred and ninety-nine.
That is the current, so not the delta, but the currently, what they're generating, seven ninety-nine.
We're charging today, that's what it would do, but if we went up in it.
Changes, it would generate approximately twenty thousand.
I got you, I missed, I misread that, okay.
Yeah.
And then it goes through each one.
So, the year you said would be, what, seven and twenty?
Roughly seven fifty.
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty, well, with these changes, that would be an average, uh, ten-dollar increase to a single-family home, and then obviously the ones that are just below.
So if we were looking at paying at the twenty-one million that we're trying to hit, seven fifty is a joke. But if we're trying to pay a debt fee, a debt, um, service, right?
About ten million if that can, if you use the seventy-five thousand, about ten million if that.
Would retire that?
That that would be almost.
It would support.
The other thing to note.
So we're still short eleven.
The other, the ten million that, you know, the impact fees that aren't included in there.
Mm-hmm.
You're still short, and that's where we want to talk, because where you, we also know we can't raise this rate where it's doubled.
Right.
We go in and double the single-family user, that's, that's not what we want to do. So what is a, a comparable rate? Um, the other thing that this assumes is no growth in connections.
No growth.
No growth in connections.
Right.
This is a static, connections we have today.
So it doesn't take into account Redbird, it doesn't take into account all the new stuff, Taylor Morrison, the TriPoint.
What do we say, every seventy-five homes.
Yep.
They're roughly, single-family homes would cost a thousand bucks a year for water, or water and sewer revenue. And every seventy-five homes gets you another million dollars in capacity. Again, there's increased costs, there's increased.
So we would need seventy-five, that would be, we would need a thousand homes roughly.
That's what I was looking at, so, yeah, exactly.
You still have.
So we're gonna get a thousand homes as well.
Yeah, but they'd have to be built and tapped in in the next twenty-four months.
Correct.
That ain't gonna happen.
Correct. This isn't, uh, we do not need to talk with your financial advisor that water rates alone is gonna be the solve for the problem.
Right.
Uh, because we can't, you know, one, we want to stay competitive with the entities around us, and two, we can't put that big of an increase on, in, in a single family.
Right.
Um, so, which is where, you know, kind of, where I want to kind of leave with, you know, tonight, is like, okay, what do these numbers seem uncomfortable, if no decisions are being made, just clarify. Is this in the range of what a comfortable increase y'all think would be for water and sewer revenues? Then, what if it is, we'll go back, so, okay, here's generally what we're working with, within bounds. Sit down with the financial advisor and stand, say, where's the delta come? What does that mean in terms of tax? Is there, what tax rate would have to be levied in order to support that additional? Is that an option? What other items are out there to be in, to be, uh, between the two?
Also, if you've got any input on the individual, uh, the individual sections. Now, we, we kind of went from, uh, what we've heard in the past from council, about wanting to impact the single-family, at least the low-end, single-family users, you know, as little as possible. Uh, but, you know, you look at these, and you see the, how much the commercial is going up versus how much the multifamily, versus how much the institutional. Don't have any direction we could give on what y'all would like to see on that? Is anything we do? And we even think they go up or down in the individual classes?
We will send out a side-by-side, so you're not flipping through pages so you can see.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Current structure, we have it, not, here's my current structure, here's a proposed structure, so y'all can see it side-by-side, because flipping through six pages is not efficient.
So, obviously, with the current state of affairs with the economy, burdening families even further, is something that I don't think this council will speak for y'all that we're not interested in, right? However, due to the state of affairs with the mass influx of people, um, something's gonna have to give in order to support it. And part of me says, well, you know, the commercial, the commercial's still gonna come, they're not gonna really look at water rates, and maybe make them a little bit heavier than the residential.
I mean, especially when you look at, using the commercial as the example, when you can, taking that same averages applied to Conra, you're at seventeen hundred bucks versus fifteen hundred.
Right.
Yeah, no, so, I was connecting, I mean, even though we're going up just shy of thirty percent, or, um, yeah, thirty percent on their rate, it was, it's obviously extremely low.
Extremely, yeah.
Right. We have to sit.
And I mean, the deltas really are in the single-family and the commercial.
Right, because that's where you're falling, which.
Yeah.
You don't have.
Yeah, I was trying to see if you could, we could offset one with multifamily, or.
Well, we're looking at a.
Even institutional.
Uh, about twenty percent increase at single-family, just shy of thirty percent at commercial. Hmm, less than thirty, uh, about twenty percent on multifamily, and about twenty-five percent on institutional. Those are rough, obviously, but.
I want to know, what is that increase gonna accomplish for us? Because the way I'm reading it is we're increasing the rates in order to have enough money to borrow and then pay the note.
Right.
The increase in the rates will pay the note.
It won't pay the whole note though. It'll, it'll pay a ten million dollar note, and we need a twenty-one.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, that's, that's.
So where's that eleven million gonna come from?
So we're still short.
We're still short.
We're just looking at ten million.
We're looking at stop, you know, shortening the gap of, okay, now we're gonna raise taxes to cover twenty-one or eleven.
Ten and the impact fees, but yes, between the, you're still short.
Yeah.
And so, you know, where the next steps coming out of this are kind of setting some general parameters around these rates, to then get the financial advisor fully involved, it's okay. Here's scenario one, two, three. Scenario one has these different components to generate that revenue. Scenario two, scenario three, that combination. What we didn't want to do is run a hundred percent in a rate, water rate scenario.
Right.
Or a hundred percent in a tax rate scenario. There's gonna be some type of blend or some other mechanism, um.
Is it?
I, I, I had a conversation with, um, with the county a couple of, two, three weeks ago, three weeks ago roughly. The conversation had to do with the fact that they went in and, and got ahead of other counties and did, a lot of it had to do with transportation, um, studies, to, so that we, they basically got fifty-one million dollars worth of grants. But I asked them at the time, um, if they knew of any utility grants that the state comes forth, because our people weren't able to find it, and he said, there's actually a ton when it comes to utilities, like the water tower issues and all that kind of stuff. He said, you just have to go to the right place to get them, and they're through the state.
So what we've looked at, so the, the water infrastructure plan, uh, the water infrastructure plan, there's a regional plan, I guess, to be part of, and so it's for these larger regional type facilities. Um, not saying that there's not ones out there, the ones that we started looking at to talk to the financial advisor. Um, there's the regional, our, it's gonna be rural water funds, which those are much lower interest rate, which we're, we're not in a defined rural accounting for those. But, um, we have included in the RFQs for the, like, the Witsford Plant Project, they have a funding specialist as well to assist with these, uh, because I think all the help we can get is better. I would also, um, I think that it would be prudent to engage Grant Works, our other grant administrator, that Grant Works is already working with the city, uh, to, you know, also kind of feel proactive and look for other opportunities that are out there, outside of the home grant, to help us with the ARCA funds, uh, to help identify some of these.
Right, because I've, the, the example I used was the fact that the state basically mandates us to spend this sixteen million dollars on a water tower and to upgrade to this, you know, the twenty-five hundred hookups. Right, because I've, the example I used was the fact that the state basically mandates us to spend this sixteen million dollars on a water tower and to upgrade to this, you know, the twenty-five hundred hookups. So if the state is telling us, hey, you must, then at some point they have to allow us somewhere to go, well, we need help. You're forcing us to do this, so we need help to do this. And he said, yes, that there's, the state will help you.
Yeah.
So we just have to find it.
Yes.
I was at a workshop today for towns, and they brought the USDA, that's a great funding source as well. Have we looked into the USDA? Apparently they've got a lot of money, and I don't know what their latest programs are, but.
Well, they are, regardless of coming to talk to us, they, we were talking about the USDA. Like Chris was saying, that's part of the, with the RFQ process, is try to select an engineer that assists us with that.
Okay.
And so, I know this is not a popular thought, but do cities say, okay, this year it's a ten dollar rate, and in five years it's another ten? Like kinda start stair stepping it up and make that known to the taxpayer, so it's not a, just for the future reference and thought.
Yes, so when the last, might have filled the gaps on the year, I think twenty fifteen, that rate analysis was done, some of that timeframe, and it came up with a three-year program.
Right.
And so I think we, I know we had one and two, I can't remember if three, three was never put into place with that third.
Why didn't it go just?
With the third year, Jack, Jack had evaluated it and said he didn't feel like we needed to initiate the change with the third year.
Okay.
And we were doing fairly well.
Yeah, it was administrative decision based on where we were, okay.
Yeah, it was definitely a tiered approach into it, you know, you don't have to go all along with the thing, especially, you know, these projects, even that twenty-one million dollars of projects are not done in a calendar. Those, I mean, especially, you know, when you just pulled out the water plant and the sewer plant, I mean, those are two, three-year projects. However, obviously, we wanna have the funding in place.
Sure.
Before we sign a contract.
Sure.
But there's still the preliminary work of getting design, the approval portion of it, so you know, the wastewater plant, the state has been extremely backed up. We're still waiting on that final wastewater permit for the plant, which is why we haven't brought that proposal back to y'all, 'cause y'all wanna sign proposals and not have the final permit in hand. And then on the water plant, we did receive that permit from Lone Star for the well out on that site, so when we did the last. The preliminary stuff in this has been in the works, just now to that point that we've not been.
Taking that leap.
Forever there, so. There's also, you know, just again, things that we'll, we'll look into and work with me and your attorney and staff, items put into these development agreements, developers participating in the cost upfront. I know for sure that is in the Redbird agreement, that it talks about, you know, that they need additional capacity as they bring on stages, if there's a need that they agree to help. Now, it's a vague term, but those are in place, or at least out there, have those discussions done, in the front, a little more now, you know, and work through that kind of additionally.
Did we ask any other developers on the, like the Marjorie Cox or TriPoint, yeah, ask them on those?
I think it was a, and I'm going off the thinking, I'll have to confirm this. It was a general term that the attorneys had in there, it was talking about when additional capacity is needed and requested, but I will, I will have to confirm that, I do not know for sure.
Okay.
Did you get back with us on that?
Yes, for sure.
So basically, everything on here though is all water and utilities, there's really no transportation.
That's correct.
Anything whatsoever. So to bring that up, right, and obviously, we don't have the funds to do anything. One of the, the reason, the conversation that I had the meeting with Mr. Smith was he wanted to inform me that they had funds for transportation. They'd put Buffalo Springs, Lone Star Parkway, and at least one other road that's in Montgomery on their list to get federal funds, where it'd be like a ninety-ten split, where feds would pick up ninety percent, we'd pick up ten percent, and then we'd fix the road. Now, those were all submitted by the county for us?
Yeah, so I talked to Robert Walker the other day, and he's like, hey, I just want you to know, like, on the ballot in May, there's gonna be a bond. It passes, we're gonna make Lone Star Parkway a four-lane road and help you out there, and he was talking about being able to also help maybe on ten ninety-seven, I think he said? No, not ten ninety-seven, somewhere else, he was talking, maybe Buffalo Springs. He was talking about, if we can get this bond passed at the county, then there'll be funds to help y'all with some infrastructure.
But these were federal funds that they'd already secured, that if we didn't have to go for a bond for, they'd got them from the Fed, so.
We would pay ten percent, hopefully with this, what the county's doing, yes, we'll pay the cap through taxes, but at the same time, it would be on their back to get it done. Yeah, we wouldn't have to participate at all, it would be done.
Okay.
And, and he said Lone Star Parkway, and I think Buffalo Springs, I'll double check with him, but he just wanted to let me know.
It was all on this big list of streets and roads and.
He's got a state of the county meeting set up for January thirtieth at Lone Star.
Yeah.
Y'all explain.
Now, they do wanna, one of the, the projects that they wanna do is to connect the ten ninety-sevens. So one is farther south than the other.
Yep.
They wanna straighten it out and connect them at the northern one.
Yeah.
And that's part of that project.
It's supposed to be like a flyover, they were talking about, that's been talked about for years, but then when I talked to TechStop, there was no interest because, I can't remember, they were talking about like that bad turn, then straighten it out and go in over one forty-nine. I'm sure you've heard this for the ten ninety-seven west, I'm sure you've heard this too. But I, but then I talked to somebody and they said that's not possible.
Behind Summit Business Park.
And yes, and they need to do it while there's imminent domain, like there's one business, there's nobody there, no, no.
Yeah, so it's on their radar to do though.
Right.
And I know the one forty-nine expansion, so we've contracted by the engineer for TechStop for one oh five south to.
One forty-nine to two forty-nine, yeah, Jackson Road.
Jackson Road.
Yep.
We're expanding that.
To a four lane.
To a four lane, and with a median.
Yeah, unfortunately, but yeah.
But that sounds like, when meeting with them a couple of weeks ago, that sounded like it was on the fast track.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a survey crew out there, they've been requesting utility plans, and then, I mean, shout out to TechStop, but it's moving.
And I know that, that south loop that we've talked about, it's not Robert Walker's, but I asked him about that, and again, talking with those at TechStop. I mean, I know Charlie Riley's spent a lot of time in Austin advocating, and they're getting, they're getting five huge, big roads going. But what can we do to get, to advocate for that south loop? It's so necessary, although I don't like it 'cause it takes people away from our downtown. But this place absolutely gets locked up, and it's only gonna get worse with a thousand more houses here and ten thousand around us.
I think, you know, and we'll, we need to follow up with Kenda Keys, 'cause they were updating kind of the city's.
That thoroughfare, yeah.
Has a, so we provided them comments before Christmas, so the city has kind of a unified, here's what we think is of the best interest of the city, and here are city roads, and here are the kind of surrounding, how those interact. You know, we've had those meetings over the years, but now with this bond funding coming up and these other projects, making sure that.
Glad you brought that up.
Concerning, because Randall pulled out our ETJ, so now there's no conversations gonna be had that we can have with him about going through his property.
Well, I brought that up.
Yeah.
Because that thoroughfare was part of what he brought, what he was talking about, and I said, well, you know, that, those guys are no longer in the ETJ, that's, you know, and he's like, we are already on them, and we're just gonna tell them this is where we're going, so.
That's good. Sorry, but it's the time to do that now, before things start getting built out.
So that, that does lead us to that other development, this housing development with Taylor, no, Cox, the Cox Development, 'cause part of that went through theirs. And we told them during the time of the agreement, we have no idea.
Right.
Nobody's told us anything, so design a way.
Yeah, well, theirs is also north of one oh five, and I don't know that there's any, any, I've not heard from Lone Star Parkway to one oh five. And theirs is gonna be a really wide road anyway, that boulevard is wider than, because they were.
Well, that's the Redbird is gonna be wide, but I'm talking.
No, 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 I'm talking about Cox.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes.
The TriPoint folks, which is now.
Harrington Road.
Harrington Road. Harrington goes to TriPoint, they're cutting in the widened section through. There'll be a gap as it lines the carwow property to get to one oh five. And then Marjorie has incurred, the warning filed as in their land plan, continuing that same south and curving. And then we've already, we had preliminary, just the discussions with Pulte, who's looking at the Mabry properties, and this is something you have to plan for as well to continue on. Now, shifted a little bit, 'cause originally where the line were drawn by the county, it was more aligned with the bus park, and they're expanding the bus park, that's not going anywhere. So we've re-proposed, this is coming south of the school, it's immediately south, and then it's an open shot.
So any chance of them widening Spring Branch Road? Because that's kind of, they're gonna, you know, they're widening Keenan, and then they'll, they can just kinda jog over to Spring Branch to bring them around this way? Is there, have you heard anything, instead of doing that south loop through Marjorie Cox and Redbird, they could do it on the side?
Right.
'Cause since Spring Branch, both of those developments touch it.
Conversation recently with the county. Previously, we talked to the county, we drew up a couple of concepts where Spring Branch continued north and then jogs to be.
They painted with.
Versus creating a new one.
That's right.
'Cause it was between railroad, there's a pipeline, and one oh five, try to consolidate that as much as possible.
And we don't necessarily need it to line up with the Lone Star Parkway, the north side.
Right, and even then, I mean, it's still open land, so I mean, you know, the concept would be is where Emma's Way connects, it kind of jogs.
Right.
Goes closer to the cell tower, and then it's lined up, or you have a pretty close proximity, but it's been a while since we've had a conversation with the county, personally.
I'd like them to line up.
Yeah, I think it's too hard, I think that house that's there or something funky or.
The sawmill.
Sawmill, that's right, and you can't touch that thing, 'cause it's got a problem.
Superfund site, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, which I don't know why you couldn't build a road over a superfund site, but whatever.
It's just concrete, it's not produced. Okay. Well, I don't know if it'd be worthwhile to get county, TechStop. The city of Montgomery, city of Magnolia, and the commissioners that, to sit down and say, okay, what are, tell us what y'all's plans are. And, and that's why, you know, Mr. Walker was talking to me about it, because he's like, I'm gonna need your help, helping with this bond, you know, on your side of the county, because, in his precinct, because it would really widen, and everybody knows that you'll lose your teeth going down Buffalo, you know, Lone Star Parkway too fast, 'cause it's a terrible road, and then widening it too. And we could get it resurfaced and widened, I mean, it sounds like a win, but I'm, you know, how much are you talking about as well?
How much is a bond, I've heard, but I didn't remember how much the bond was?
He, they were still discussing it when I spoke to him.
And that would cover our ten percent then, is what you're saying, of the federal ninety-ten split?
I don't know, the bond goes to the county, it didn't go for.
Well, that's what you were saying, they can step up and help.
Right, 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 right. So.
And that, but that's where Smith had said, no, the county has asked us to take that road, and I said, they want nothing to do with it unless they fix it, right? And he said, well, if the feds paid for nine percent of it, the city coughed up ten, then it would be your road, and they could tell them to go away.
Yeah, well, we just want a good road.
That's exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna take something that's broken.
Right.
And have to spend a whole bunch of money.
To fix.
To fix it, yeah.
No, I agree, so.
Had it fixed right, but we went through this process seventeen, it was, it was redone from end to end, with the anticipation of turning it over, and see how it is now.
Well, they just, you can't just fix the surface and say, oh, it's smooth again. It's, if they don't fix the road itself, the substructure, it's not gonna hold.
I'll tell you, when I moved here, nobody knew that road hardly existed, and they didn't use it, and today it is a superhighway, really. So.
Being a little off track, I think also getting on the county's radars in Montgomery, Lone Star Bend and Lone Star Parkway. 'Cause that's.
Star Bend, Lone Star Parkway.
Longo, Modark Road.
Yep.
I'm sure that she has issues there, I would assume.
Yeah, yeah. There's a dead tree there that I had told Mr. Palmer about several times, I don't know if he ever told you, but I get asked about that tree all the time. Is that our tree, or?
Our tree.
Okay. It's on private property?
It's already.
It's gonna kill somebody if it falls over. It is terrible, yeah, it needs to come down.
We're hoping the wind blows a certain direction.
Away from the road.
Yeah, so I know that kinda took us away from our, our projects, but because we don't have any money for roads, we need to look where we can get any money we can for roads, so.
Right, and it's, you know, that's what Stan and I too, we're on the HGAC, and I know Howard Wood, who's on the council over in Conroe, is really trying to beat the drum for a small, like a lot of the small cities did a coalition together, because it's depending on how many seats you have by your size, and when you were having at Houston, and even Conroe and other big cities, in that HGAC, they have way more seats at the table than we do, so we were trying to say, okay, now we're forced to be reckoned with with a bigger seat with all of us in it. And Howard, they, he got fifty-seven, I don't know, fifty-seven million given to Conroe for roads, but.
All Conroe.
Yes, that's right, that's it. And so, that would be great if we could, but I think, not being pessimist, but I think a lot of cities are experiencing a lot of growth in this area, and we are, I think there's other places that would get the money before us, from what I'm hearing. Unless you can sit up there, and off of Greenway Plaza over there, and advocate, 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 I mean, in their face constantly, it's absolutely darn near impossible if we don't have somebody sitting there to get any kind of assistance or acknowledgement. And they acknowledge, and they like it when they see us at meetings, but funding us is a different story.
So Chris, are you confident that these impact fees will come to pass?
This list is not, you know, we don't have anything on this list I hand out that's not a true project. You know, these are, there's executed agreements, they're moving forward, there's deposits put up, there's, there are moving cases. I, I think that this is, and we try to be as conservative as we can on the timing and pushing things back, 'cause things always push. Like, we don't have on this list the Antucket project, which that one, I mean, that, that's gonna be a very large impact fee, 'cause I think it's, you remember, is that three hundred units? Three hundred forty units, so probably an eight-inch meter, so that's, you know, five hundred thousand dollars, maybe. They will develop eventually, but there's not a timeline today, so we don't have one on this sheet. So I, I do think that it will come, I think that, you know, the timing is clear, I've got plenty of money, you know, what underdirt sector, obviously, twenty-five, but it's.
And even with all of this development, we still have quite the canvas for more build-out, and so.
There's some very large pieces of property still that have been kicked around, you know, the, around the Rampy Pond, you know, that has been kicked around, and a lot of kind of still infill and the other developments. And then just now, and you'll have the BCS Capital project.
Yep, right.
Which that piece of wood study will be entered not tomorrow, but the next agenda. Someone was looking at the property next year, so there's.
Right, Six Acres.
Move, that will come in addition to this, but it's also the catch twenty-two.
We have to have.
Timeline.
Yes, exactly.
And also quicker as well.
Okay.
So let me kind of wrap up, and so we can, we can move on with it, but from what I heard, you know, kind of relooking at the commercial rates, seeing we can have some room to move up in that. Again, this isn't a set in stone, but is there any major kind of initial thoughts on the other, you look on that proposed bill scenario, that, hey, look at taking this up or kicking this down? We'll send out the side-by-side comparison, but just for initial pass, or will we start with the financial advisor, or looking at this in whole, and say, after it, it's gonna be, we estimate eight fifty, no, we estimate it's six fifty based on the changes.
Yeah, other than, I think, let me do my math, other than the commercial, I think everything else is fair. I mean, my opinion, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I'm with you, that's, that's the only one that's glaring that I would also take a jump at.
Sure, yeah, not set in stone, we'll play with it, and give the financial advisor and come back with some options and recommendations.
Commercial, yeah, just make that jump.
So you, just to clarify, you're talking about the possibility of raising commercial up to generate more than the seven fifty? Not bring another one down, but keep it as.
No, yeah, 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 you know, use this as a flooring, but then that one.
No, I think the other rates are fair.
Yep.
I just, it looks like we're a little behind on commercial. I mean, compared to Magnolia, we'd be similar, but compared to Conroe, we're way behind, so.
Well, and Magnolia has different problems than we do. Well, and Magnolia has different problems than we do, so I think we are, of course, I think we're a little bit more desirable because they, they're old Magnolias. I think that they're trying to, anyway, I have a whole theory behind it, but yeah, yeah.
We're trying to draw in.
So we will look at, let me just kind of capture what we talked about. So we'll look at the commercial rates, reevaluate that, sit down with the financial advisor after we did that analysis. I don't have a timeline, I want to give some, a couple of options for y'all on, on how to make this funding gap. We'll take a look at the USDA funds and any other funding, as well as, as the rest of y'all always, have the conversation with staff in Grant Works on what it would take to get them more engaged, to look for other options that are out there. We'll take a look at the water belt or rate analysis that you mentioned, Carol. And this is going way back, but we'll look at the College Street, kind of the rate mitigation stuff, some options for that.
Carol, we, we met with Grant Works after we went to TML, and they were gonna be looking at some other funding. I'd never heard back from Luke and her either, but I also think that Gary kind of jumped in, I'm assuming, yeah, and that, to keep us out of it. So we had had a great conversation with him, and I don't know where, I'm assuming, I'm pretty sure he was told not to talk to us. So I'm assuming that whatever the update is, is that knowledge went out the door, so we might want to go back to Luke and, and see, because we had.
Yeah, he's just right there in Magnolia.
Yeah, and we had a great conversation, and he was, he's definitely said there's this, oh yeah, there's a funding arm for this, and there's an opportunity here, and he had a lot on us to do.
There's a lot of, a conversation with another city the other day, I mean, they're, they had more money in grants than their general.
It can be done, it's just finding them.
More money coming in through grants, and it's, you know, it was a full-time, that was, you know, so she just was fully focused on finding and searching and, you know, engaging every single pot that was out there, but it's.
Well, the lady that ran the workshop today is a grant writer, I don't know if y'all know of any, but if we can use her, she's been very successful where she is in writing grants, and she's the one that was telling me where to go and what to do, but anyway, and Stephanie was there.
Definitely something to think about to get a grant writer.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's something that you need full-time or if that's some, I mean, I, yes, we need grants full-time, I get it. But I don't, I know you can do it contract basis or.
Carol, who was the grant writer from over east side, Robert Rice or something like that?
Jay Rice.
Jay Rice, okay.
Do they find the grant and then write it, or do they, do we have to find the grant and then they go write it? How does that work?
My understanding is a little bit of both.
Okay, because I feel like we have to be the hunters and then we tell them where.
Yeah, it's both, exactly, we want to go after these, here are some alternatives, and then they will really help. How do we tailor this package to get the maximum scoring out of this? And, you know, but where do we find it? Every time that we've done grants with the city, it's, it's been that, with Grant Works and with public management as well. How do we, you know, find these projects and fit them in and make them meet the criteria to maximize it out?
Right.
It's a, a little bit of a dance.
Nothing moves fast with grants.
Nothing moves fast, but.
But they can certainly add to your bottom line, yeah, okay.
Yeah, one more question, just to make sure. Y'all had made mention of a possibility of a tiered program over a couple of years. Is that something that y'all want them to look at as well? For the seven fifty, maybe a little more, or do you want them to look at, you know.
Let's look at options. I think we're open, and maybe it's like an every three-year, four-year option for the next twenty years. I mean, I don't know if that's, even within the realm of reasonable, but yeah, what did we do with, when Jack had it? Was it every two years or one year? Surely you're not doing it back-to-back, right?
It was an evaluation, and the, the result was, let's increase, we need to get rates up if we're losing.
Yes, yeah.
Water and sewer fund was being subsidized by the general fund every year. So it was a plan of, we need to raise the rates quite a bit, but let's do it over three years.
Yep, okay.
Let's split it out, and we just only did two, so.
And I, I don't know that we need to do it year to back-to-back-to-back. I think that's kind of really be a real hard pill for us to be able to sell, for somebody to swallow. But I definitely think it's, certainly a three-to-five-year program would be, but I don't know if that would actually satisfy the money that we need though during that time.
I mean, there's always going to be more projects, there's always gonna be more stuff to, to take care of. And I think it's also just a good practice to continually look at them on a annual basis, even to say, you know, this last table, where are averages compared to the people around us? You know, maybe to look at our fund balances, are we still, you know, generating enough, just a quick look, kind of gut check. Hey, if Conroe Magnolia have all of a sudden skyrocketed, you know, is there something that we should be?
Anybody, you ask anybody here, we're always the most expensive water around, that's what I hear all the time. But this is great to see because now I could say, we just had this study, because you'll see it on Facebook, you'll, I'll hear about it. I hear that our water is the most, I lived in the Woodlands and I didn't pay this much for water, I live here.
That's the main reason that pages in there.
Yeah, it's, it's eye-opening, truly, yes.
What, what, where we, where we're gonna lose all the time is when you deal with these April sounds, Walden, because they're on their own muds, their own.
But those are way more expensive muds though.
No, it's not. I have a house in April Sound, I can leave the sprinklers on every single day and forget about them, and my water bill at the end of the month is like a hundred bucks. If I did that here, I'd be a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars.
Wow. You got that brown, that gray water irrigation system over there?
You just, I mean, I don't even pay attention, I just, whatever.
Yeah.
Turn the sprinklers on and they run, I literally had one spraying in the air for god knows how long, because I don't live there. And one of the neighbors finally called and said, hey, you know, you have a sprinkler, every time your sprinklers come on, it sprays it all over.
You got a geyser.
Across the street.
Oh my god.
And my wife's like, I'm like, what's the water bill stolen, it's like ninety bucks.
That's beautiful. I hear opposite about muds, that's crazy.
Fifty bucks, and I'm like, oh, well, there you go, that's forty dollars a month.
When you use those examples, you know, the Walden and April Sound, Montgomery, you know, one of the biggest drivers of this fee is the regional water. That SBRI fee, I'll have it down, it's three twenty-five, three twenty-five thousand on top. So yes, you know, there's, Conroe and Magnolias are higher, but there's a lot of that.
They have the SBRI fee. Who knew back when?
And like Conroe, we, we don't have a moratorium.
Yeah, or Magnolia does too.
Hasn't had a moratorium for, what, how many years now?
Yeah. All right, thank you, good job. All right, that is it on our agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn, if y'all have nothing else. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye. Those who say nay, the ayes have it, the motion here is at six thirty-six, and we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you. Everybody? Pick a name.